Great, all right, so let's move on to our next discussion. Discussion regarding state of the law as it pertains to the Cumberland School Department's policies protecting transgender and gender nonconforming students, including but not limited to A3, A7, J4, J8. Seven? Oh, yes, it's all seven. All right, invoke your knowledge. All right, everyone, so just to bring you back to earlier this year, I believe, in the spring, this committee, this subcommittee came together to make some amendments to the Title IX policy, to the district's Title IX policy. And that was in direct, a direct response to a specific court decision that vacated Title IX regulations, the 2024 Title IX regulations that codify protections for transgender students under Title IX. So this committee got together, this subcommittee got together, and made those amendments. The amendments, as you may remember, were minimal. They included just removing references to gender identity and expression as a protected character, that's it. We did acknowledge, or you all did acknowledge, that there are other policies that the district has in place that are inclusive of protections for the protected characteristic or protected class gender identity and expression. And so I thought it was important for us to sort of come together and just understand that what happened under Title IX isn't as straightforward as simply just removing any reference to gender identity and expression across every single policy that may be invoked. And so what I thought we could do is if we could step back, and I have slides that I wanted to share with you all, unfortunately did not get to print them, but anyway, I think Carrie said that I did a decent job of explaining myself. So stepping back a little bit, at the federal level, there are protected classes, what the federal, what federal law deems protected classes, and so that includes things like race, color, national origin, religion, disability, AIDS, genetic information, familial status. And states, so the federal government, the federal law says, sets the floor. States cannot protect less than the floor. However, states can add additional protections, and many states do. Rhode Island is one of them. So Rhode Island includes additional protections in housing, for example, on familial status. It adds additional protections in housing and employment for victims of domestic violence. Those are some examples. On top of that, and very relevant to our conversation, Rhode Island law establishes in its clause protections for, um, the protected characteristic gender identity and expression. This may confuse you a little bit. At the federal level, however, in the employment context, gender identity and expression is also a protected characteristic, because in 2020, the US Supreme Court decided in a case called Bossa v. Clayton that transgender, that people could not be discriminated against, hired, fired, or, you know, receive repercussions on the basis of their status as a transgender person. Does that make sense? Federal, federal law sets the floor, states can add protections. All right. So I already discussed Bossa v. Clayton. In the context of Title IX, what the then Biden administration did is that they read Bossa v. Clayton, the Department of Education, and said, okay. So Title VII applies to, is, is federal civil rights law that relates to employment discrimination. It applies to schools, it applies to K through 12 LEAs, it applies to Cumberland. So if we're saying that adults, employees cannot be discriminated on the basis of their transgender status, it stands to reason that we can't, that we can't discriminate against students based on their transgender status. And so what the Department of Education did is that it applied the Bossa decision to Title IX. So that was more of an administrative move. It wasn't necessarily a court case, or a judge, or a court panel that decided that gender identity and expression would be included in Title IX. It was the Department of Education making that determination. If I have two in the weeds, please let me know.
I'm, I'm making a chart.
I've been all documented already, right, Mark, on our page?
So when we think, if we dive deeper into Rhode Island law, so what does Rhode Island law say on, on gender identity and expression? So specifically irrelevant, the Rhode Island Safe Schools Act statewide bullying policy, the statute itself includes gender identity or expression as one of the protected characteristics, which means that if a student is being bullied on the basis of their transgender status, it is prohibited under, not just the policy itself that the committee has adopted, but also under state law. Other laws that codify protections for gender identity and expression are related to housing, employment, public accommodation, and healthcare. The Rhode Island Department of Education, as you all know, has also issued guidance and released model policies for schools to adopt to protect the rights of transgender and gender nonconforming students in Rhode Island schools. What I'll say is that guidance is not controlling. So guidance is helpful and typically is developed, developed in concert or in alignment with the, the law that is set, but guidance is not controlling the way state law is or the way federal regulations are. Am I losing anyone?
Not anyone.
So when we think about, okay, how have, how has this issue been interpreted by, by courts? So I may have not mentioned before, the, the US Supreme Court has not issued decisions on the transgender question as it relates to some of the more contentious questions that we see come up, related to athletics, related to the use of preferred pronouns, related to, there's one more category, the use of facilities and bathrooms, thank you. One recent decision in the First Circuit, which Rhode Island falls under the First Circuit, and so Rhode Island as a state looks to the First Circuit for guidance, okay, how did, how has the First Circuit interpreted protections for transgender students? So the First Circuit in, I think this is a 2025 case, Foot to be Ludlow, parents challenged a Massachusetts school policy that used a student's preferred name and pronouns without parental notification unless the student consented for the school to ask for parental notification. The First Circuit held in favor of the school stating that parental rights in that setting do not extend to controlling the school's administrative, administrative decisions. And their reasoning with the court was the school had a compelling interest to protect vulnerable children. And so as you can imagine, you know, a student expresses, you know, I, I want to use these pronouns here in school, my parents don't know, I don't know how they're going to react. That particular school district had a policy that said, we don't tell your parents unless you give us permission to tell your parents. Any questions on, on that? I guess one clarification is that the court didn't say schools cannot tell parents. It just made a decision that the policy that the district had in place that it would not was, was fine, like it was an administrative decision to have that policy. So going back to Title IX, what happened with Title IX just for us to have, you know, to get a little, to have a little reminder. So in 2024, the final rule for the Title IX regulations, they codify protections for transgender, gender nonconforming students. A number of states, as in response to the final rule to the Department of Education on the particular provision related to the inclusion of protections for transgender status. Earlier this year, a Kentucky judge vacated those regulations, and the effect of this decision meant that in practice, schools are currently upper, operating under the 2020 Title IX regulations, so those are back in place. And again, without confusing you on the timeline, the 2020 regulations did not include, codified in the regulations was not the protection for transgender and gender nonconforming students. So 2020 regulations are in place for now, and if you have my, my slides up in front of you, I bolded, underlined, and italicized for now. All right, so moving forward, so how do changes to Title IX affect other district policies that are inclusive of gender identity and expression? I list, well, the agenda listed the ones that do reference, that make reference to gender identity and expression, so it's the anti-discrimination policy, shout out to Mark Fiorello for being the driver on that policy. A3, A7 is the transgender and non-binary, and non-binary policy. This is the policy that is informed overwhelmingly by guidance from the Rhode Island Department of Education, the guidance that I had, that I had mentioned earlier. J4 is the anti-bullying policy, so that policy is cut and paste from the statute. The statute is very prescriptive in terms of what the, the bullying policy has to say. And then J8 is a harassment, personnel, student rights, and responsibilities policy, which overlaps, I would say, with A3. However, A3 is a policy that has a little bit more teeth, because it gives more direction to the administration on how to take action in the event that there is a complaint on discrimination based on a number of protective classes, including gender identity and expression. So how does the Title IX decision affect these policies? Best way for me to put it is that it's complicated. And the reason is because it's not as straightforward as simply going into A3, A7, J4, and J8, and saying, oops, I just found gender identity or expression here, crossing it out. And if we use the J4 example specifically, removing gender identity and expression from that policy could put the district in a position where it's actually violating state law explicitly, right? And so simply put, just because transgender students are not protected under Title IX due to the decision from, from Kentucky, they are still afforded protections under Rhode Island law. And that's where it gets a little, it's messy, it's messy, it's complicated, and not as easy as just saying, okay, we're putting these policies on the agenda, we're going to make these amendments, let's go. That's not to say that you all as a committee, in fact, it's your responsibility as a committee to discuss this, to contemplate this, and to think about how we might move forward. If we look ahead a little bit, some of the most, one of the most contentious questions might be answered by the US Supreme Court within the next year. So they've added two important cases to their docket. Both cases are, both cases involve transgender athletes that have brought challenges to state laws that ban transgender athletes from participating in, in athletics, on athletic teams that are consistent with their gender identity. One note on that is that the lower courts both decided the cases in favor of the transgender students that were bringing on the challenges. So one case, I believe, is in Idaho, and then the other one is in West Virginia. I haven't seen, I've looked, I've been looking at the schedule for the US Supreme Court, I don't know when it's on yet, I don't think that that's, the schedule has been released. But certainly, there's a, a void right now in what schools are supposed to do on the issue of transgender athletes in sports, and being able to participate on the sports teams that are consistent with their gender identity. I wanted to do a little bit of an exercise with you all, and maybe I'm going to put you on the spot, but feel free to not, I mean, if you're not comfortable kind of engaging, that's fine, but I hope these, I love hypotheticals, because it kind of helps you think through the issue a little bit more, and so if we think there's some hypotheticals that are relevant, if a transgender student brings forth a complaint because they're being bullied, harassed, and the student believes it's based on their transgender status, because a lot of the epithets, a lot of the language that's being used against the student make reference to the fact that the student is identifying in a way that's inconsistent with their biologicals. Does it violate Title IX? It likely doesn't violate Title IX. Does it violate state law?
Yes.
And district policy?
It does.
It does. Second hypothetical, transgender student is denied participation in the Glee Club. I picked, I don't even know if Cumberland has a Glee Club, I just picked the club. Because other students have expressed not wanting to spend time with a transgender student. Does it violate Title IX? Probably not, if a complaint is brought forth under Title IX, probably not. Does it violate state law?
It's under harassment.
Yeah, that's what it is.
And district policy? We, we don't, I'm, we're starting off talking definitives, but likely violates state law and district policy.
Likely.
I know. So now we're getting into some, we're getting to some of the more complicated ones, right? A student, a transgender student wants to use a restroom, not a gender neutral restroom, but the restroom that is consistent with their gender, gender identity. Does it violate Title IX?
No.
Maybe I wasn't clear.
Oh, sorry.
So, no, I know, you're confusing. So a transgender student doesn't want to use a general, a gender neutral bathroom. The school, the district has not forced that student to use the gender neutral bathroom. The student wants to use the restroom that aligns with their gender identity. If a biologically female student brings a complaint under Title IX, it, what, what do we think about?
Yeah.
Maybe, right, there's, there's something there based on what we've seen.
It might be it.
Exactly. So probably violates Title IX, does it violate state law? But as I mentioned, the district did not prohibit the student from using the bathroom with her choice. So under state, under state law, no, no violation, under Title IX, violation. And so there's a conflict here.
Right.
And it's one of those things that you don't know will happen until it's, for lack of a better word, until it's, it's, until it happens and it's tested. And so it puts school committees in a really interesting situation, right? The truth is, in a situation like that, if you deny, if a district denies a transgender student the, the ability to use the restroom that aligns with their gender identity, is there a possibility of a claim under a state law? Yes. However, is there also a possibility that there is a claim by another student under Title IX? Yes. And so when I say that it's messy and it's complicated, that's, that's kind of the example that I.
It's offsetting penalties.
Yes. Similar, the next hypothetical that I had was also just based on sports teams, which isn't the same as restrooms, but again, one of the more contentious areas in this discussion. So a transgender student is allowed to play on a sports team that is consistent with their gender identity, a claim is brought forward under Title IX. On its face, there's probably some there, something, right? Under state law, if the district, and under state law, actually, if the district, let's say, denies the student, we switch the facts a little bit, the state, the district denies the student the ability to participate in the school, in the sport, on the, wow, on the team that aligns with their gender identity, then we might be in some trouble under state law. So the last one that I had is pronouns and parental consent to use chosen pronouns. As I mentioned, the example I gave with the recent First Circuit decision on pronouns, the court did not say that schools cannot establish policies that include parental notification, it only said that there was no affirmative duty by the district to have to, it didn't say that the policy that the district had implemented was, was wrong. So that a district could adopt a policy that said, we will not inform your parents unless you give us permission to. Questions on, on that?
Can you talk a little bit more on that one as it relates to BOPA?
So that's an interesting question, and another hypothetical, and I'm sharing these hypotheticals, I'm literally coming up with them, I don't, I don't necessarily have solutions for that, but an interesting hypothetical to add to the discussion could be, and I'll use A7 as, as an example, right? A7 is the transgender and gender nonconforming policy that the district has, and I believe it includes language that is, that says that the district will not, or may not, something like that, may not disclose to anyone the gender identity or the pronouns used by a student, including their parents. Your question related to BOPA, if a student, so maybe there's no affirmative requirement, but what if a parent, what if a parent has a sense, is getting a sense that maybe their child is identifying differently, the parent just wants to know, assuming, let's say in this case, the parent is not feeling any type of way about it, it just literally wants to understand what's happening with their child and asks questions of the school, of school officials, maybe it's a teacher, maybe it's the principal. What happens then? Do you put school officials in a position where you are omitting information from the parent who is the eligible holder of, of the education records? Unless the student's 18, that information belongs to the family or the parent's guardian on behalf of the student. So your question on BOPA is right on, right? How, how does that work if a parent impairs? If a parent asks for education records and for some reason, the records disclose something that gives, gives any notion that there's a difference in how students identify and feel. So complicated, right, complicated. Any other thoughts on, on that?
So I want to allow for any, you know, anything that the committee wants to talk about regarding this, that's why it's such a heavy discussion, and that's frankly why it took us so long to get this on the agenda, because it's so messy and so nuanced, and we can't really make any kind of decision or vote on this, you know, at, at a point until some of our case law has been determined. And above all, this is just me personally thinking, above all, I want to make sure that we're doing whatever it has for our benefit at all times.
For me, it's difficult. My personal morals are different from what we are required to do by law. So, and everyone that knows me knows that I have spent years making sure that anything that's in anything that we have here has a correlating law to it. So in Title IX, when that happened in January, I sent that message that day to our lawyers and said, we need to change the Title IX. Everybody, everybody, yeah, everybody knows I was jumping on top of that one right away, I'd been monitoring that case. So, you know, I, I was thankful that we did that. I think it comes down to, the difficult part of this is you have federal law, and the states have done what is in the federal law and then added to it. So when you look at some of the Rhode Island general laws, what, 1621, 33, and 34, are two that talk about the bullying, and then you have the gender identity is in both of those, so it does push it out there. I personally have always questioned A7 for our policy, because I wasn't sure how much of that was what we as a district wanted to do, and how much of it is exact from the law. And I know that Rhode Island, if anybody hasn't read their guidance on it that was issued, they issued it a long time ago and said, we want everybody, it's guidance, but we strongly are asking you to put something together on this. The other side of that, and this is where I have a problem, Rhode Island says that's a guidance, however, there's a couple of other Board of Education, Title 200, Chapter 30, Title 200, Chapter 10, right, the Civil Rights, and in there, they're saying you must do it. So it's not just a guidance. And my concern has always been, if we don't do it, if we say, well, that's a guidance, so we're going to modify without, without doing damage to that gender identity term that's in the two Rhode Island laws, but we modify A7 in some ways, does that go against what the Board of Education is saying you must do, not just the guidance? And does that lead us to a situation that we're going to have funding issues? And I say that, and I know that everyone says, oh, they can't withhold your funds, it's only guidance. But Rhode Island General Law 16530, 30, sorry, I had to talk about that stuff, that one, does say that, that aid can be withheld if there's legal, it's not just about paying that charter school that we don't want to pay, and I think what infractions of laws and regulations. So the Board of Education, right, must report all those infractions annually as well to the Rhode Island General Assembly. So I'm not sure how we look at this, and I'm, I want to follow the law, I, I don't want to just look at the Rhode Island guidance, I know what the Rhode Island guidance says. But what about these other Board of Educations?
What are you, I'm sorry, I don't have what you have in front of me, so, and these are, are these are court cases, what are?
No, these are, these are in the Board of Education, this is in the state of Rhode Island, in recline, it's in the state of Rhode Island, Title 200, Board of Education, Chapter 20, Council on Secondary and Elementary Education.
New regulations?
Subchapter 10, yeah, regulations. Chapter 30 is about elementary. Chapter 10, specifically under 32, I think they're talking about the Civil Rights. And this is where the statewide bullying, this is all part of that statewide bullying policy, and they're all referencing that, which is under a law, right? That's 162134, is that, I think it's.
I don't have it, but I believe you. So just for additional context on the sort of hierarchy as well, in terms of controlling, controlling, language, controlling law, that the statute, really, regulations are drafted in response to a law. So they're meant to, the laws I, I mentioned, right? Some of them have accompanied regulations, so what you're referencing, those aren't laws, those are regulations, which doesn't mean that they're not, it's not controlling law, but they, they sort of go hand in hand. The, the regulation doesn't, can't go above the statute, right? It's not, it's, it's not more controlling than, than the statute itself.
It does with the transgender, that's where I'm having difficulties.
It's more prescriptive, it's more prescriptive.
Because it's, it's in 2.3 specifically, protection for transgender and nonconforming students, and it talks that they shall be consistent with state and national best practices, guidance, model policies, they talk about programs and activities operated by Rhode Island Public Education Agencies shall be free from the discrimination, as we know.
But what happens?
And then they say, we shall adopt a policy addressing the rights of transgender and nonconforming, and that was in the regulation, saying by July 1st, 2018, we must have that in place. So is that? So is that, that's not just a guidance? Am I understanding that correctly? Because that's Mike, that's where I'm having the difficulties.
Yeah, so, I mean, yes, it's not just a guidance, it's more than that. And the regulations are being, being more prescriptive as to, okay, here's a statute, it provides some general information, or here's statute, they provide some general information, the regulations kind of tell you, and here's how you're going to make sure that you follow the statute.
So regardless of the guidance that RIDE gave, it's in a regulation that we have to adhere to?
Yes. However, what happens when the state regulation or the state law is differing from the, it says we have to abide by state and national, but by abiding by national, we're actually not abiding by state. And I think a lot of this also starts from the let the states decide, start messaging that we're getting from the federal government. Okay, if we're letting the states decide, then Rhode Island has decided one way.
Well, and I think that that's the whole premise of our government in total, and has always been that the states, so the federal level sets it at a high level, the states individually, right, the states individually can add more to it, they just cannot take away what the federal is. So it does, it's always, I think, all regulations are really, and all laws are really like that, they leave it into each state, it shouldn't just be federal. So Rhode Island is meeting federal, the regulation is meeting the national, but Rhode Island has added to it, and I think that that's where we have that petition. And if it's under a regulation, then our hands are tied. If it's under a guidance, that's not tying our hands and maybe we need to readdress.
So I think what I'm hearing you saying, and we haven't talked about the other policies, the other policies read very differently. Because they don't include specific sections on, for example, privacy and confidentiality, restrooms and facilities, phys ed classes in intramural and interest elastic sports. Those are very explicit in A seven, and it is, it is based on the model policy that RIDE created. That said, there is nothing that stops this body from considering, discussing A seven in particular and wrestling with some of these specific provisions in that policy.
Okay, and that's why I'm wondering, because the regulation, it says that we're going to address at a minimum such issues as confidentiality and privacy, discipline and exclusion, this is the regulation, staff training, access to school facilities and participation in school programs, dress codes, official school records, and use of preferred names and pronouns. So to me, that's A seven. And that's a regulation, so we really can't alter our A seven because of this regulation.
I hate to give legal advice in such a public way.
No, that's fine, I'll raise this question.
Because I don't want to tell you, I don't want to, like, this discussion isn't meant for me to tell you how you should proceed. I'm more so wanting to share that it's, for, I hope that you walk away thinking, okay. So I know something happened with Title IX, I know that we addressed it under the Title IX policy, we have all these other policies that are invoked because they address or include references to gender, or, or gender identity and expression, and that it's not as straightforward as just removing those references, that it actually is, is a little bit more nuanced than that.
So we're being thoughtful in making everything we need to look at.
That doesn't mean that there isn't a subsequent meeting where you all dig into a, a policy in particular, as, as the committee wishes, as the committee pleases.
And because Rhode Island General Law says we appoint the Board of Education to make these regulations and give them that rein to do it, then we have to go by the regulations, even if it's not codified into detail into the Rhode Island General Law.
Yeah, I mean, regulations are that, like, you know, statutes tend to have language that authorize, in this case, it would be the council and the Department of, around the Department of Education to codify regulations. And that's true for many statutes, it's not just this one. And the regulations are meant to be structured and they are, they are controlling. I think that we're just dealing with, we're working within a space that is not clear.
And I know that Rhode Island General Assembly, the House and the Senate both had bills that were introduced in 2024 to specifically address the sports and women being in women's sports and all of those things, they were both addressed, and both of those failed. They did not get passed, I don't even, they came out of committee. So the Rhode Island General Assembly didn't take them forward for anybody that says we should just do it, they're not addressing it either because they're waiting these court
Okay, so when things are not clear.
When things are not clear.
And it gets handed to the school committees.
There you go. Yeah, you do this, or not.
Or we. My job is to protect all of these students.
No, and I completely agree and understand what you're saying, you know, I look at it that we should protect all students equally, and some things, as you gave with some of your examples, could mean another type of student is going to be her because of something on this side, and that's across the board on both sides of it. You know, and I know we have a duty to our students in our town, we can't please every single one, we can't, you know, make every single child be the way that we all want them to be, but we have to look at the whole general and see how we can address everything. And I think the difficult part is RIDE and the way that they did things, just issuing guidance, you know, probably, probably like get trouble for this, and I hope and help you, or, you know, or phone calling Dr. Gohn or anything like that, but, you know, they skirt the issue, oh, we're just going to give you guidance, but they know about these other things, well, we're giving you guidance, but we're making a regulation over here, and that regulation's making you do it, but we're just giving you guidance, we can't force you. That's great for the soundbites, but the fact of the matter is, there is things that force things to happen, and it leaves every one of us confused, our personal beliefs, wanting to push them forward and knowing that we can't without impacting all of our funding, schools, everything.
And, you know, just to close the loop on your point earlier about the regs and how they reference the model policy, RIDE has not changed its model policy, it remains the same. So RIDE has skirted the issue, I think RIDE has determined to keep it as is.
This is the best way forward for them right now.
Yeah, well, that's all, every issue was just the guidance, this is the guidance.
Yeah, so right now, RIDE hasn't.
Right, but it's still the guidance.
The non step is a step. The lack of action is actually an action.
Well, I just think it's horrible because they haven't changed it in so long, and then you have regulations that, it's not just a guidance, it's not telling you you have to do it, and that's what many of us don't know, and when people question why RIDE says, well, it is a guidance. No, RIDE, tell them it is a regulation. I guess that's my problem, is people coming on a regulation. You know, I'm sorry to everyone in the public, I may upset with my personal beliefs, but I am going to do what's right by our students and what's required under the law. Everybody, I believe, has the right to their own rules.
Okay, so ending that discussion and opening up for the next agenda item, which is public comment. Public comment will be limited to three minutes a person, and when you do come up for public comment, please state your name and address. Yeah, thank you. I'm trying to figure out my phone. I got a new phone and I'm like, I don't know where it is. All right. Yes, come on in.
Hi.
Right in there, it's fine.
Eugene Francioni, Cumberland resident.
Could you just state your address?
356 High Street, Cumberland. All right, I just have a few questions about transgender ideology and the bathroom situation. Why does anyone think it's a good idea to put a male in a female's bathroom? Across the country, there has been a few, not a lot, because the country's big, but there has been sexual assaults. I feel for our children that it's not a good idea. Also, we push a transgender and identity situation. The country and statistics have shown that there is now becoming a higher suicidal rate between transgenders, there's also school shootings. Who implements that? Teachers, parents, teachers and parents, they are supposed to help our children be the future. They're not, because they have an ideal, an idea of certain aspects with gender and all this. It's not a good idea, okay? Children need to be children. When they're 18, if they want to decide what their gender is, identity, or pronouns, okay, that's on them, they're adults. But as teachers, as parents, now, we have to raise our children to be the future, not be what's happening now, we have school shootings, we have suicides, okay? Science has not proved that the medications that these children are taking are safe. We have no idea if they're causing mental illness, okay? We have to do something about that now. There's off-label use proving that it could cause mental instability, okay? Virginia, all right, it's had 350 sexual assaults in the last four years, five years, okay? That could happen to us, we have to be prepared now, we have to stop this, or at least try to prevent it, okay? That's what I want to get at. If anyone has an objectiveness to this, I would like to hear someone's comment.
Comment on public comment? We generally, probably no comment on public comment, cheers.
Okay, can, if anyone in their subconscious disagrees with me, can someone tell me what is a woman? If not, I can give you the explanation. Two letters, XX, scientific fact. People around here believed in science, they follow science, they followed COVID, they followed everything else?
It's three minutes, your time is up.
Exactly. Have a good night.
Next up, the public comment.
Yes, thank you. Hi, my name is Jennifer Wood, I'm the Executive Director of the Rhode Island Center for Justice, and I'm a resident of Providence, Rhode Island, 312 Marson. I'm here tonight in my capacity as Director at the Center. We represent students and families in public schools statewide in Rhode Island, and the policies that you're reviewing and discussing this evening are of acute concern to many of our clients. I did serve for 10 years as the Chief Legal Counsel at the Department of Education during a time when many of the policies that are being discussed tonight were promulgated. And you've heard from your legal counsel about some things that are unsettled in current law, and I think that those were covered very precisely, but I have some good news for you. There are a whole bunch of things that are absolutely clear as bell and that are not unsettled at all in this area of law. Really, the only area that is unsettled is the current interpretation of Title IX of the Civil Rights Act, and it's implementing regulations. And you've already heard about that, so I'm not going to actually address that because I want to start at the end and tell you what's clear as a bell, which is that, as you correctly pointed out, there is a state regulation on point that requires you to have your A seven ring, uh, policy that was properly promulgated in response to the state regulation being passed in 2018. That state regulation was challenged and on August 19th, 2025 upheld in the state of Rhode Island by Judge McBurney in the Rhode Island Superior Court. In that decision, he upheld the regulation as being in full force and effect and the requirement that your school committee continue to have that regulation in full force and effect, based on all of the department's guidance, the 2016 guidance, the 2018 regulation, and the 2010 Regents' Policy, holding that, establishing that transgender and gender nonconforming students and sexual orientation, discrimination on those three bases are all prohibited in the state of Rhode Island. That was conforming to the 2000 and 2001 laws where the General Assembly added gender identity and sexual orientation, all of the other civil rights laws protecting people in Rhode Island from discrimination. So your A seven policy was actually reviewed by reference in the Superior Court this summer. In rendering the decision that you are required to have that policy in place and it is the law, regardless of what any of our personal opinions might be, the judge very thought it, we went through the changes to other civil rights laws, starting in Rhode Island in 2000, with the addition to the Fair Employment Practices Act and the public accommodation laws of sexual orientation and gender identity, and then also went forward, and I'll hurry up, to talk about, let's say, schools law and the bullying law. So the policies that you have, your bullying policy, the statute is clear, it absolutely covers sexual orientation, gender identity, and you cannot deviate from that, otherwise you would be violating state law, as well as your A seven, which has just been reviewed by the Rhode Island courts, and I'm helped. I assume that was my three minutes.
That was your three minutes.
Oh, thanks.
Sounds like I appreciate you, thank you. I know there are more people that want to talk, so that's.
Are you going to talk?
I will.
Do we set the timer now or?
Yes, sure, I'm Julian Belander.
I'm so sorry, I am definitely, seriously, would you mind just coming over this way a little bit, maybe scooch over next to Mr. Fiorlo, just so we can hear you over here? You have a projection voice like Beth.
Yes, I will try, I'm Julian Belander, I work in Cumberland, I live in East Providence. I worked in Providence for 17 years before I came to Cumberland, this is my fourth year here. I learned that this evening, the Policy Subcommittee would be discussing policies, including A seven, and I felt compelled to come and share some of the quotes from the policy itself, as well as a conversation between Mark Fiorlo and Steve Alquist, who both happened to be here this evening, and the Rhode Island Guidance, which was referenced in another civil rights article about a conversation that former Commissioner Ken Wagner had on this topic. So the A seven policy is written to ensure that students who are transgender or non-binary are provided and insured a safe and comfortable school environment in which to continue to grow and develop while fostering social integration and minimizing stigmatization. I think that it's really powerful and impressive that Cumberland was the first district in the state to enact a policy of this nature in 2016, ahead of the 2018 state guidance, and that is about 50 years after Cumberland was also in the national spotlight for the Aaron Frick case in the 80s of Cumberland High School not allowing a man, a young man, to take another young man to a prom. I think it really speaks to the town's ability to listen and make changes, to go from a stance like that half a century ago to leading the charge in the state. In the conversation that Steve Alquist had with me, Mark Fiorlo, Mark said, you've got trans students in your school, whether you realize it or not, you have to do what's right and create a place for them. He did, I would like to recognize, earned the 2024 Howard K. Award for Outstanding School Committee Leadership from the Rhode Island Association of School Committees. He was a part of the school committee for 12 years, and he worked with Dr. Rachel Santa, our former special ed director, to write this particular policy. It was in response, according to this conversation between Steve and Mark, to a former middle school principal, Jay Masterson, saying, we need help, we need some guidelines, we need a. need a policy of some kind. So I think, again, that is a testament to the school committee for listening to the people who work in the town, who are working closely with the students. I know you mentioned morals earlier, and we had a great presentation last year with our building and district leaders. Stephanie Gonzalez came and did a great immigration and education presentation. We also had an LGBTQ presentation where one of our staff members noted that regardless of an individual's personal moral beliefs or religious ideologies, that LGBTQ and gender-affirming policies at its core is a suicide prevention measure. It was already mentioned this evening that we have higher suicide rates in transgender individuals, and the policy that we have is attempting to address that. So I just have these printouts that I can leave with somebody if they wanted them back at all the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Mark Hero. I live in 98 Wald Street, Cumberland. I just want to touch a couple of topics. The home school policy, I heard that there was talk about getting rid of it altogether. I hope that's not the case. We instituted that policy whatever year, specifically because there was such a disparity among the school, the different school buildings, how homework was being handled. There'd be a giant step back to get rid of the policy. As far as homeschool law goes, there is no law. There is no law in Rhode Island General Books. The only place it is mentioned to get, because something has changed, is in the attendance policy, the nation's vote. There's one line that refers to homeschool. The intention of a homeschool policy in the past had always been about the things that we provide for homeschool students, extracurricular clubs, special education services, just to have that all in there. What I heard a lot about what you would put into a policy, I think it's more procedural thing handled through the Assistant Superintendent's Office than what needs to be put into the As far as transgender goes, it's important to note that if a student, one of, this is the, this is Gonzalez's hypothetical, if a student was not comfortable using a bathroom because there are trans students also able to use that bathroom, that student in our policy has the ability to use a non, a non-gender bathroom. Gender neutral, thank you. A gender-neutral bathroom or even the nurse's office. So we try to balance that policy to really take care of every student in the district. Also, the other hypothetical about the parent asking the questions, I believe, whether it's in policy or procedure, that would go through the social worker's office, the psychologist's office, to work with the student and their family to kind of bridge that gap, so that, you know, because we want students to be open and transparent with their parents. The issue is, also, actual legal records of the school department are not changed. It is only internal documents that are changed with students' gender identity. Also, RIDE guidance, which a year and a half ago, we were told, we were in violation of RIDE's policy on gender students because we didn't have certain things within our policy, even though there were other sections of our policy handbook. And we, and I had a conversation with somebody at RIDE, and I was told if we did not change it and put it into the policy itself, we could in fact lose funding. So we were threatened with that, you know, even at that point. And that was just something simple, like, one of the issues, there were three issues, but one of the issues was the dress code applying to transgender students, which was already in our dress code policy, but they had, they wanted it in the, in the training policy. We have, we have a very simple, are we done? Okay.
I'm not the chair.
You're the speaker.
I don't want to ever tell Mr. Fiorello to be quiet.
Tell my wife.
Yes. Good evening. My name's Deana Ripken. I am a resident of Cumberland, and I speak tonight both as a resident of Cumberland and as a family physician. My address is on Mendon Road, 2157.
Thank you.
And I speak as a family physician and as a model two. I work closely with children and teens and families, and I'm here to strong my, to voice my strong support for the district's transgender policy, including all the protections it provides. These policies are about one thing, it's making sure that all students, every single one, have a safe, supportive place to learn and to grow, and that's something that we want as parents, as neighbors, as teachers, as members of this town. Positive school climates are strongly linked to better academic outcomes, improved mental health, and lower rates of bullying and suicide. And that's not politics, that's evidence. In my practice, I see many teens dealing with anxiety, depression, and stress, and the pressures they face academically, socially, and internally are real. For transgender youth, those pressures can be even more intense, especially if they don't feel safe or supported in their daily environment. But when students feel affirmed for who they are, when they have trusted adults and inclusive policies in place, they're better able to focus, to connect, and to prepare for adulthood. A welcoming school climate doesn't just support LGBTQ youth, it improves outcomes for all students, and schools that prioritize respect, dignity, and inclusion are schools where young people thrive. Parents absolutely want to be involved and supportive, and most teens want that too, but it's also true that some kids need time. Sometimes the first safe conversation about identity doesn't happen at home, it might happen in the school, with a school counselor, with a teacher, a nurse, or a physician. It's not about keeping secrets from parents, it's about protecting vulnerable students long enough to help them find their voice and ideally open the door to the family support when they're ready. And in some heartbreaking cases, that may not, they may not be ready, and it may not be safe for them to discuss it with them. We can support parents and students at the same time, it's not a contradiction. What's at stake here is the safety and well-being of really young people in our community. Our public schools have a responsibility to serve all children, including those with transgender or questioning or gender-fluid identities. They deserve to show up as themselves, to feel safe, and to be treated with dignity, just like everyone else. Thank you.
I am on the other side of the issue, as I'm sure many people know. I, just, A seven, I don't like the policy. I don't think there's ever, is ever a time when a school committee or a school administration should keep secrets from, from, from parents? You know, everyone says three times more likely to commit suicide, three times, you know, we have all the hypotheticals. But what about the hypothetical, you know, toward the end of summer, your child harms themselves, and you find out later on the school knew that they were suffering from something that they're three times more likely to harm themselves? I don't think, you know, I am 100% fine with any, any student transitioning, even if their parents don't approve it, as long as their parents know. Because as a father, my son, or my, I don't, daughter, if my son was suffering from, from something that happened in school, as I'm sure you guys know, I would fight to the last to make sure that, that, you know, that I fought for him. And to assume that parents are the enemy here, to assume that you can't tell parents that their, their child is suffering from dysphoria, gender dysphoria, or gender identity crisis, I'm not saying it's a sickness, or I'm not saying it's an abnormality. I, I support a child's transition in school, out of school, as long as the parents know. There might be a time when the parents are going to need to get that child help. I also am a strong supporter of, you know, women's rights, and I think that you can just look at what's happening around the country. You know, there are no, I mean, there are very few cases of a, of a female transitioning to a male where they're taking scholarships or championships away from, from male athletes. It's the other way around. We, you can't just put your, your head in the sand and say that, that there's not an advantage there. There is an advantage there, and we are doing a disservice to our biologically female students in Cumberland if we just bury our head in the sands and say this is okay. I understand it's a state law. I was, I go to most council meetings, haven't been in a little while. I was at the council meeting with ADUs, accessory dwelling units. The lawyer told the council people that this was state law, and if you don't pass it, you're going to get sued. I think it was six to one they voted against it. You know, they said, let them sue us. You know, they took a stand. They don't want Cumberland more crowded, and they took a stand, and they said, let them sue us. So as Steve, our attorney, our normal attorney, not, you're not normal. As he, as he always says, you know, you guys are the committee, I can just give you advice, but I don't have a vote, you know, so I, I'll speak more of this if it ever gets to the, to the regular meeting. But I 100% appreciate the fact that we can all do this, and we can all have this discussion in an amicable, respectful way. I am doing my best to make sure we get more people at school committee meetings than some of you who are at one of the school committee meetings where I got a lot of people there, you know? So, you know, and I, I mean, exposing what we're dealing with in, in the town, in the school committee, I don't think it's a bad, a bad, bad thing, and I, you know, I do it, and I, I hope to continue to do it, and in the process, give my opinion, but I thank you guys, and I respect the secretary about, you know, we all have our different opinions, and it's great that we get to express them. Thank you.
Can I have a comment? I would say a worship to. We're adjourned.